Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I believe today is Monday, September 16th, 2024. We are assembled for a, an afternoon work session with our community planning, infrastructure and resources, folks. There are three items on the agenda. My name is John Cafalas, Commissioner from District One. I'm joined by my colleagues Kristen Stevens from District Two and Jody Shattuck McNally from District Three. We have our county manager here, Lorraine Volker, and across the way there, we have our Assistant County Manager, Lori Cadrich, also listening in and participating. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Leslie.
Hey, thank you. Hello, Commissioners. Leslie Ellis, Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources Director. We have a relatively short agenda for you today with one item from community development on code changes for the Estes Valley potentially. And we wanted to just, I'll kick it off here and hand it over to Rebecca and Matt shortly, but we wanted to distinguish that we're aware that there's a conversation that may come up in the future around growth management and coordinated planning and intergovernmental agreements. That's part of the community development work plan. This is not that. This is a set of potentially smaller housekeeping land use code changes and then one more slightly substantive topic around assisted or accessory living areas or ADUs, accessory dwelling units, as they're referred to in different codes. So with that, I will pass it along to Rebecca or Matt. Matt, Matt LaFerty, he's gonna take this one away. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Leslie. Matt LaFerty, Principal Planner, Community Development. Just gave you a quick memo. Hopefully you had a chance to do it. I put copy in front of you over there. Just to give you a little bit of history behind changes that have occurred to the land use code and how we operate in the Estes Valley. For four years now, we've operated independently of the Town of Estes on land use matters in the Estes Valley, and that's what Article 13 of the Land Use Code covers. It was our transitional section in the code that said, okay, Estes Valley, which was running things for about 20 years, had specific zoning and had specific standards that we carried over from their code into our code when we transitioned back in 2020. Over the last maybe six, eight months, there's been some things that have popped up. For instance, there's, there's a requirement in the comprehensive plan for the Estes Valley planning area that says that if somebody were to develop property over 30 acres in that area, they would follow our conservation development process. But there's no reference in that section of the code that would, that would point you to going to that section of the code and using our development standards and following our rules on how that would happen. Similarly, we have that for 1041 regulations. If somebody came in and wanted to pose to do something like, you know, a big reservoir or something like that up there, we don't have 1041 regulations in place to cover that area, or at least the references aren't adequately in the code. So those types of items, as well as a lack of sign code regulations, which just came up the other day, somebody wanted to put a sign up in the Estes Valley area and our staff couldn't figure out, well, do we use our code? Do we not? We don't use Estes Valley code, so we really don't have sign regulations for the Estes Valley planning area any longer. So it's making those proper links in our code to make sure that we are using our standards and that we're using some clear direction as to what we expect the public to be using up in that area or the, the community. And then lastly, we've looked, you know, the county just got done working on expanding our ALA regulations to be a use by right for the entire county with the exception of the Estes Valley planning area. And the Town of Estes, not too long ago, expanded their ALA regulations or ADU regulations to make them a use by right. So the only place in the county where you cannot do an ALA or an ADU as a detached structure is in the Estes Valley area. And so we would like to find some synergy there to correct the code on that. And the question may be, and that's why we spent a little bit of time to, in this packet, giving you some idea of what's going on, as to which direction we might want to go. Do we want to align ourselves with the Estes Valley code because the valley relates very much to the Estes, the Town of Estes? Or do we want it to look like the rest of the county and then follow the county code? And so we did a brief analysis to compare those two regulations. And really, the big differences lie in the amount of square footage that you can put into an ALA. For instance, in the, in the county, you're allowed 75% of a primary dwelling or up to a certain square footage. We have 900, 1,000, and 1,200, depending on the size of your property, that you can do. And if you exceed those limits, then you go through an appeal process. In the town, they're at 49%. So it's sharply different. But then again, the lot sizes and the configuration of properties and things up there are a lot different than you're gonna find in the majority of Laramie County. So it may be that we want to look to both codes and see which one best fits that area. Currently, in the unincorporated area, we do allow ALAs, but they have to be attached to your primary dwelling. They can only be 33% of the square footage of that dwelling. And then you have to have a lot that is 33% greater in area than the minimum lot size for that zone district. So those were old regs that came out of the Estes Valley area and even, or the Town of Estes, and even the town has modified their rules as it relates to that. In all cases, we all agree that they shouldn't be rented for less than 30 days, so we don't want them to be used as short-term rentals in those cases. And then lastly, the biggest thing, and I don't know if the town has seen recent legislation, but there are limits, no limits in the county on occupancy. So a family or a living unit, as we call a living unit, can occupy that, and that could be any number of people unless we use health or building code regulations to regulate the number of people. In the town, they limit it to four people in a living unit, in an accessory living area. And in the unincorporated area, you can see that it says the combined total of a dwelling and accessory dwelling shall not exceed eight. That's what's currently in our Section 13, Article 13 of our code. So there's some differences in there about where we should go. So given that, as Leslie was saying, most of these amendments are very simple amendments, don't really require, I believe, a whole lot of outreach. We may want to spend a little bit more time with the accessory living areas, work directly with our Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee a little bit, and maybe have one session where we go out and talk to the public and try to understand what's going on. But we would look for you guys to give us direction on that.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'd open it up for conversation.
Yes, thank you, Matt, for your excellent presentation, and I thought the memo was great. It was very helpful. Commissioner Shattuck McNally, do you have any questions, comments, feedback?
Thanks, Matt, for the comparison chart. That's very helpful. You know, having been really a very frequent part of the land comprehensive plan and that, that move with the town and the, and the Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee, I know that some of these were conversations that we talked about. I, today, feel like I need to sit down and really read through these and understand and kind of have a little more time to digest this. Certainly, I know with the state new law, there's no, we can't limit those. I just want to make sure, I, I do hear stories of families of 10 cramming into a tiny one-bedroom, trying to just, because they can't afford it and they're trying to work up there. And I just want to, I need more clarification and expansion. Maybe you could send that to me on what health and safety means and how we enforce that. I hear this from communities of color, and I, I had conversations like this on Saturday when I went up for the EVICs fundraiser and talking to some of those families. And so I do know, hearing directly from those families of some of those concerns. So I, I just want to make sure we are being preventative and also not making more work for folks who maybe have to enforce this or, you know, I'd hate to have folks in those situations, which I, I think cramming a small family in a small tiny room is not healthy, in my opinion. So I am also, when you, if I, if I could just, you said we only have, say, over lots over 35 about how this, what, can you go back and restate that? I wasn't sure if I heard you correctly.
The, the, I think what I was saying is that in the Estes Valley area, you have to have, your lot size has to be the minimum lot size plus 33% in order to put a detached accessory or even an attached accessory living area on it for the Estes Valley planning area as it's currently written in our code.
Okay.
Neither the town nor the balance of the county have that stipulation.
And that is a unique area, looking about water and access and sewer and all those things.
Exactly.
I'm a little more sensitive to that.
Right.
And also buffer areas around, you know, the, the park and things. I just, I also wanted to know if we have kind of run this by the park, get their feedback, especially since some of these will probably bump up against their boundaries. So I kind of need a little more time to think about this before I can say your area. But I certainly know there's certain ones we have to align with the state, so I, I understand that. But the other ones, I'd just like to at least have a day or two to kind of digest this.
And if I could speak to the state issue, the state passed the law that you need to allow them in certain areas, and those include metropolitan planning areas or areas of certain populations, and the Town of Estes doesn't qualify for that at this point. So we're, we're pretty free to operate in that area. And, and as it relates to talking to the parks and some of those things, at this point, we're just trying to figure out, is this something you want us to work on? If we are gonna work on it, how far do you want us to delve into it? So that's very good information to, to say, you know, we'll, we'll try to pull everybody in that we can.
I think this is a very delicate situation, and I really like to see us work with the town to encourage density than sprawl. And I think I would say that I've already had people inquiring about this, especially from the town board. And I'm just, before we, I just think, before we open this door of opportunity, which could create a lot of challenges, I'd like to just explore this a little bit more. So, thank you.
If I could add a couple, a couple things. So related to health and safety limits on occupancy, we can follow up with more information on that. But that is, we, we do look at that for every new home, every building permit, every ALA already that comes through. So examples of those limits are, what is your septic capacity on your property? What are the limits on, if you have a well, what are the limits associated with that? So we never allow, approve, approve So we never allow, approve a building for occupancy greater than what water and septic or sewer can handle. And similarly, the building code has limits on square footage per person and bedrooms and things like that. So we do have functional occupancy limits. We just don't tie it to a specific kind of arbitrary number that's disconnected from the size of the house, of the home. The other thing that I wanted to mention, well, I may have, may have lost that thought, so I'll, I'll bring it up again if I think of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Commissioner Wood, for your questions and comments. Anything else in light of what Rebecca just shared with us?
And I appreciate those, those views and conditions. I just, I need to think about this because I'm, I think this is a different area than the rest of the county, and it's sensitive and geographically constrained. And I'm just, I need to kind of think about this and kind of look at the maps and some of the things. And I, but I do want to maybe work with the town to encourage, you know, pushing that kind of density more into the town. So, and I, I don't know if even, we do this through the whole county, we have to look at all our corridors. I mean, we have elk interactions that are unsafe and bears. I mean, there's just a lot more to deal, to understand with this than just square footage and things. I think those, some of those things have to be considered in those areas. So that's what's racing through my head right now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So on the chart, it says the occupancy, or not occupancy, shall not be used as rental units. Can an ALA not be used as a long-term rental in the Estes Valley?
It can. So the first column and the second column are the county and the town of Estes. But in the Estes Valley area, which is that unincorporated part of the valley, which is governed by our Article 13, the way it's written, it says it shall not be used as a rental unit right now.
Okay.
And that's the way the old Estes Valley code used to read. And so when town went in and updated their stuff, it was after we had settled out and we already adopted our Article 13.
Okay.
So essentially, ALAs in the Estes Valley, in the unincorporated Estes Valley right now, cannot serve as housing, essentially. They can't be rented, rented out.
What was it like, cannot what?
Cannot, cannot serve as housing, as rental housing. I mean, you can have it as a space for maybe a live-in care provider or a family member housing in that sense, but it can't, it's not, doesn't function as a separate housing unit.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Shadak McNally. I think we need to be sensitive to, you know, some of the, some of the concerns that she expressed. But I also think that, I mean, I would, I know as this area struggles with housing for workforce. And so I see ALA as a possible workforce. That could also be somebody that helps, somebody who's older with chores around that, you know, the, the property too. So I, I mean, my, my feeling is to be more aligned with what we're, what we're doing in Laramie County. But I would like to have, I think it's important to have some of those conversations first. So, but I do think, you know, we should be able to have detached, especially when the square, the lot size is, you know, appropriate, and that they should be able to use for long-term rentals. Do they, do they have sanitary, sanitary sewer in the Estes Valley, or is that largely septic?
In portions.
In portions. So they're probably more closer adjacent to the, the town, they would have the sanitary sewer system and then, okay. Because obviously that, you know, we know that that, that becomes restrictive of how many people can live.
And you're talking to the health department when you are on a septic system in those areas, more mountainous areas. A lot of times, they're, they're mounted systems because they can't, there's so much rock in the ground that it's too hard to dig, so they, they mound them and they become evaporative systems. And so they take up larger areas of property.
Oh, interesting.
And so we have to consider, those can be constraining factors that are more self-constraining.
I mean, so I guess what I would say is where it makes sense, I would like to encourage the density. Obviously, where it doesn't make sense, you know, whether there's, you know, topography or there's, you know, wildlife corridors or whatever. But, but yeah, and to put it more in line with some of our regulations, just because it's, it's very confusing to have three different sets of regulations, and I don't want that. And I also want, want to do what kind of makes sense to you. I mean, you, you know some of this, for example, you know, that, that information about septic systems, like that's something that's not, you know, well, I know it now, but. So, so I guess I would, you know, I would, I guess I would push for the density that, all the density we can get without causing too much trouble, I guess, is the, but talking to the community a little, and maybe talking to the Estes Park Housing Authority and saying, you know, what, what feels like a good ALA option that could provide some workforce housing in the community. So hopefully that answers all the questions. But yeah, let's, and the sign codes and everything, I mean, I think that the ALA is the most complicated piece of that, but certainly would support, you know, having things in line so that you're not having to look at three different codes when you're trying to figure out if something belongs there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have at least one question and then a couple of comments regarding direction and all that. Going back to the, the first part of your presentation regarding Article 13.0 of the Land Use Code, you know, that pertains to the Estes Valley, is it correct, just to confirm my understanding, is it correct that what we're mostly talking about there, you know, with regard to some of the things, sign, sign code and, you know, those kinds of things, perhaps development standards, are we just talking about putting into Article 13.0 cross-references to the larger land use code?
That'd be correct.
Okay. That's a great answer. Yes or no? Thank you very much, sir. And then in terms of my feedback or comments, I, I essentially agree with what I've heard from my colleagues. I, I think that in terms of the accessory living area issue, it is more complex, and I think there should be a proper stakeholder process. I'd like to see us move in the direction of aligning, updating the ALA regulations to align with the overall county regulations, use by right, that would encourage that kind of construction, both in, to help with, as I think as Rebecca mentioned, right now you can't rent it, but it could provide a place for a caretaker or someone else, a family member. So I'd like us to consider that with the proper stakeholder engagement. That would include, of course, the community, especially folks that I think Commissioner Shadak McNally brought up about, you know, people that oftentimes have to crowd into a place, you know, to find that, that proper balance. I also was going to say that a good stakeholder would be to reach out to the Estes Park Housing Authority. So I appreciate you saying that. And in particular, last week when we were up there and they were presenting on the Visit Estes Park Operating Plan, and also how they're using these six E funds, the lodging tax funds. They have a very comprehensive affordable housing strategy. So making sure that whatever we're considering aligns with what they're thinking, get their input on what would be a proper ALA update that would encourage long-term rentals as one way of addressing the affordable housing shortage, but at the same time would, and encourage density where it makes sense, but also make sure we're not, you know, where it doesn't make sense, we're not upsetting the cart too much. So that, that's my, yeah, that's my feedback. Yes, Commissioner?
I just want to be clear, I guess I'm confused. My colleagues have both said they want to make sure that caregivers or family can live in the, in the Estes Valley. I just, I thought currently caregivers or family members could in the unincorporated parts of Estes Valley do that.
In the unincorporated.
Portions.
In the unincorporated portion, they can. In, in the town itself and in the county outside of this area, it can be rented.
And I understood that.
But not as a short-term rental.
I understood that. Perhaps I wasn't clear in my comments, but I, how do we, you know, ensure that that continues to happen, but also consider, you know, rental opportunities?
The current code doesn't, the current Estes Valley section of our code doesn't say who can occupy it. It just says it can't be rented. And, and we used to do that in our code. So it could be a guest house, you know, if, if I was a friend of Leslie's and she had a home up there and with one, I could come up and stay in that for the weekend and we're not, but it wasn't open for rental. It was just something that was more of a guest home, maybe a mother-in-law's quarter or something like that. But it wasn't intended to be a rental income facility, is how our code used to read.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Commissioner Stevens, do you want to see if Florenda has?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that I would like to see it as, as rental for long-term rental, not, obviously not short-term rental, but for, like I said, it could be workforce. So if I didn't make that clear, I apologize.
And to follow up on that, did I make my intentions clear that?
Crystal.
We need to look at how this could help address some of the rental housing issues up there.
Yeah.
And make sure that currently what's being done to offer, you know, in the, in the spirit of the Catholic worker movement, having the extra space is referred to as a hospitality room, you know, for folks who might be in need, but whether they're cared, yes, Commissioner?
Well, since we're in this, and my colleagues are pushing for figuring out how we can increase housing up there for workforce housing, then we should maybe add or investigate what is happening in some county and some of those, some incentivizing for some of these folks like they did in Maui to not, to incentivize them not to make them short-term rentals, but incentivize them to keep them where they're at as rentals. And I don't hear that conversation about maintaining the conversations about the rentals that are happening now and keeping those for the teachers and the nurses. And so I think that is something that we should also look at instead of trying to add more density in some of these properties, which I have seen as I've been driving up there every week, where people are adding their lots and adding more homes under their lots inside the town limits. I just think we should also look at what we can do to incentivize folks to, to provide for the hero housing, as I call it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Florenda, is there anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
No, I think what Matt, I guess I call your attention to what Matt talked about for public participation. Are you comfortable with sort of that less formal approach related to this particular issue? Seeing how it goes, if more is needed, you'll do more, I'm sure, but start with what you suggested.
Yes, I'm comfortable. I just want to make sure some of the key stakeholders are also participating, and I assume the Estes Valley Planning Advisory Committee would be involved in some way.
And most certainly make sure that the public's aware of this, so that if they want to make comments, they can.
Great. Is there anything else, Matt or Rebecca, on this topic?
I do want, I do want to add one thing because I've recalled the thought I had earlier. Matt was talking about new state legislation, which does not mandate the county or Estes Park to allow ALAs kind of as a by right use on, on all residential properties. However, there's another component of that bill that I want to make sure is clear. Even though it, we are not a subject jurisdiction under that bill, there's the possibility of being, being considered a supportive jurisdiction. And a supportive jurisdiction is a community where the regulations don't apply, but you voluntarily adopt the regulations at the state level, which then unlocks potential incentives. So there are potential dollars for housing construction that would be available to jurisdictions that are considered subject jurisdictions. It's, that program has yet to be fully built out or launched by the state yet, so it's unclear what those incentives exactly would look like or how to access them, what type of competitive processes there might be, what that money could be used for. But that was, one of the intents of that bill was to create kind of a set of mandatory regulations for certain communities over a certain size, and then optional regulations for other communities to opt into if they want access to those incentives.
Do either of you recall the bill, the bill number? Was it a House bill, Senate bill?
I can look that up and we can get that over to you.
Yes, thank you.
I don't recall.
Great, the great clarification. Anything else, colleagues? I mean, this has been very helpful.
No, just thank you for your time and.
Well, well done, Matt, and of course, Rebecca. Shall we move on, colleagues?
All right. So again, Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. As far as updates for you this week, I had one that I wanted to mention. A few weeks ago, at a land use hearing, you heard and a request for an easement vacation at 7800 Costigan. And you approved the easement vacation. And if you recall, the following night, there's a Board of Adjustment hearing to look at a setback variance for the same property, because both an easement vacation and a setback variance would be needed for the home to be built as proposed. And so I wanted to close the loop back to you, that the Board of Adjustment denied the setback variance for that property. And so the easement, it's kind of a moot, moot point, the easement vacation at this point, because those two were linked to each other, and there was a condition in the easement vacation that the variance must also be approved. So I just wanted to follow, follow up with you so you are aware of the final outcome of that. I think that's it for, oh, yeah.
So could that come back to us with, like, I mean, there was this original foundation, I'm trying to remember all the details, but is there a possibility that that could come back to us in a different, I mean, I know they weren't allowed this, but could they be allowed to build on like the original foundation, for example? And would that, could that come back to us?
It likely would not come back to you if they were to build on the original foundation because a variance or easement vacation wouldn't be necessary. They could pull a building permit for that, for example. And I don't know all the details of all the setbacks on the property, but this, I know that the setback variance they were seeking from the Board of Adjustment was their second attempt, the second, their initial variance request was denied by the Board of Adjustment. This was their second variance request. It was revised and included an easement vacation this time. And so, you know, unclear if there will be a third attempt or a different request. So it is possible that some kind of request could come back before you again, depending on what the property owner decides to do.
Great, thank you.
That's it for my updates. I think Leslie will provide a brief update on Growing Water Smart, so I'll stay silent on that.
Yes, so I have a couple of different things. I'll start with another Estes item. And Dwayne Penny in our Solid Waste Department this morning filled me in that there was a very successful household hazardous waste event, collection event up in Estes this weekend. They had 350 people who participated. He says that included all kinds of waste products, used motor oil, antifreeze, and many other chemicals used for yard and garden activities. And they filled a semi-tractor trailer and a box van completely from all of these items. Linda Hammett, our Household Hazardous Waste Manager, participated with an organization act, and they put all the products in the right categories. They also worked with Robert Shoemaker at the town and the League of Women Voters and who hosted and promoted and held educational information around that. So it was a really successful day, and it was a beautiful day up there and a lot of great participation. And he says he's still collecting more data and information, but we just wanted to share that with you. And then we also have Connor is, Connor McGrath from the ranch is scheduled to come and speak with you tomorrow morning. He is with his team standing up at the ranch, of course, to assist with evacuations and that kind of thing. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on how that's going, and he may need to scale back the participation a little bit tomorrow, but we're hoping that he can still come and meet with you with the posse as well. And then as Rebecca mentioned, we did participate, we had a small group, and you as well participated in part of the Growing Water Smart event up in Estes that was hosted by the Snoren Institute and the Babbitt Institute and others who helped put that together. We're still coordinating and assembling our action plan and information, and a lot of it will fold into the water plan that we're working with. But we were very grateful to participate in that and that they selected us to come, and we learned a lot about potential resources and grant opportunities and, and that sort of thing. So we're still assembling that information. I think our goal is to come back at the October work session with Planning Commission and yourselves and share out more and more details around that. But thank you all also for participating and part of that in the afternoon as well. And that's really all I have for today.
Thanks, Leslie. Colleagues, any, any questions or comments for Leslie Ellis? Yes, Commissioner, and then I have something.
First off, thank you all for going for that opportunity and receiving it. And I have to say, I'm going up and spending time with you on Wednesday. Thank you for your patience and allowing me to join the conversation. Very impressed, the collaboration, the conversations, the, the camaraderie, the rapport, just really impressed. And just really excited we're doing this work. And I hope that you all, you know, such a beautiful location, you all just had a, an opportunity to, to take a breath and enjoy outside. But I, I'm really super excited about some of the things that you were talking about and the, and how they get these actionable steps for us, and I look forward to the update. And I just want to say thank you for allowing me to join you and to have part of, be a voice in the conversation and just really. in the conversation, and just really appreciate you all. Thank you.
So I'd like to ask our county manager to provide a tiny bit of context to what you said earlier about the ranch being made available for a large animal evacuation center. I don't think we've talked about what is currently taking place in Laramie County. Could you provide a little bit of information? Florenda, please.
Sure. We did learn this morning through our emergency operations office that there is a fire in the Crystal Lakes area. It's called the Pearl Fire. Evacuations seem to be moving very, very quickly. There was a large mandatory evacuation area and a voluntary area that have now both become mandatory from Crystal Lakes essentially north to the Wyoming line. It is a rugged area. We all know the material up there is very dry, and so it seems to be spreading very, very quickly. Because it's rural, we will often set up space at the ranch to house large animals. We work with the Humane Society on the smaller animals and try to help people evacuate as best we can. Hopefully, folks have a plan in place, and, and the work that we've done to create those community hubs has really paid off. This is one of the most engaged areas that we have in the county, and so that is a good thing, I believe. But it is a fast, quick-moving fire.
Thank you. And is it correct that current estimates of the fire are two hundred acres?
The last I saw is at least two hundred acres, yeah.
And a more recent alert that just came in on my phone indicates that they're doing, I believe, voluntary evacs even up in Albany County in Wyoming. So it appears that the fire is heading north and west, I believe.
That is correct. I see that update as well. That's the last thing I see, too.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you, Florenda. I just wanted to make sure. Anything else, Leslie or colleagues?
Not for me, thank you.
We certainly all appreciate you very much and our county attorney folks that are here to keep an eye on things. And at two oh six PM, we are adjourned. You all have a nice afternoon.